Court agenda, court session this morning is the Monday, August 2021. It is about five minutes after ten. And at this time, we're going to ask Brother Danny Benson from the Vision Outreach Ministry to open us up in prayer.
Father, we call before you with open hearts today. We want to thank you for the gift of life, for this is the day that you have made. Help us rejoice in this day. And Lord, as we are gathered here today to conduct the business of Newton County, Lord, your word said if we acknowledge you in all our ways, you direct our path. And today, Lord, we're looking for your directions. Lord, I ask you, Lord, don't let the spirit of fear be upon those because of COVID and everything else, Lord. And Lord, let your peace, Lord God, be going to cover people and let them have their blessed assurance of all as well. Because, Lord God, we put our faith in thee, in Jesus' name I pray, amen.
To call a court order, we have a form here this morning. And Dean, maybe he's out at the day, he's attending the funeral. We acknowledge any guests here today, appreciate y'all coming and being a part of it. And first of all, we got the consent agenda and y'all will look through that. There's quite a few minutes that have been presented also. And the number four item, any that care problem report is not in there. Also, Melissa sent me two more certificates of continuous education or come up. This is not in there, but I have it in my. Your motion? Take the motion, we accept the consented agenda. Good mayman, Mr. Wyatt and secondly, Mr. Palmby, that we accept the consent agenda as presented. No discussion on consent yet, so all in favor? At this time, I want to present Mr. John Jefferson with the Historical Commission Distinguished Service Award. You take the picture. Next on item, we have a public forum for Mr. Robert Furlow. He's going to address the concerns of the condition of Quail Drive. Mr. Furlow, you're represented by about four of y'all, just come on up. And you have five minutes to present. There would be no action to or no response unless there's some clarification question.
Thank you for the opportunity to address this commission for today. A disrepair of Quail Drive, a section of the revenue to look at. The comments today are compilation of a lot of my neighbors that I put forward. Residents have complained repeatedly for years about the deteriorating road conditions of Quail Drive. The stretch between Jennifer Lane and Bluebird Lane, approximately one and a half miles of blacktop. As of October 30th, there are 53 breaks in the pavement and in the potholes. There were eight sections of the road that have been covered with loose gravel and debris. It all washes downhill during heavy rain. One section of Quail Drive at Eagle and dirt and asphalt debris pushed off the road into the ditch, which now impedes range. Last year, an 84-year-old man hit park, was broken, pushed up asphalt, knocked a hole in his oil pan, and ruined his engine. We've heard excuses for years that the county has no money for repairs. But other streets in Toledo Village, especially Eagle Drive, I mean, Hickory Hill and Evergreen get repaired with asphalt on a regular basis. We've observed that the Sadeen National Forest Road, which is historically a dirt road, is now designated as a county road. It was upgraded with new culverts and rock for approximately two miles last year through the national forest. To my knowledge, only two people lived at the end of that road. Heavy trucks, trucks that came in delivering rock from that road, pour up Quail Drive extensive. One could see on a daily basis how that pavement was degraded from the road trucks. The school bus has broken through asphalt at several locations because of the fuel rates, especially where it turned to handle quickly. On July 26th, road crews were observed putting out a amount of two, three buckets, five gallon buckets of asphalt in small patches on Quail Drive. Believe it or not, they were working out of five gallon buckets. All residents in Toledo Village, Section 11 must drive out of Quail Drive to get to their homes. There are 78 properties covering 103 lots, which we're all paying property taxes for road conditions. We asked the commissioners for today to evaluate this situation and make a permanent repair. We all know what grant is going to be required to make this a permanent repair. I would love to hear today that a grant has been written, submitted, and waiting approval. However, if that is not the case, I will be willing to help write a grant for this repairs. Each quarter is also agreed to help write a grant for these repairs. The feds are throwing around money, right or left. Let's be the first in line who has written, first at the trough gets some money. One pile I am, regardless of the repair. After real. Windscreen never relayed, coax on the line of high-speed internet. The school kids in this section have no access to good high speed. We're all relying on dishes and everything else. Same best, you talking about the availability of highest high-speed internet for school kids. This needs to be addressed. Thank you, Lord.
I appreciate you.
Okay, liberation and consider action on the following item. Number one, to discuss an appropriate approved donation in the amount of $1,500 to Alcohol and Drug Abuse Council, Deep East Texas, to help with counseling and prevention and education in Newton County. That's you. All right. Thank you, and step up and present us.
Thank you for your time today and for the consideration of this. My name is Kim Simmons, and I work with the Alcohol Drug Abuse Council. I'm the director of our prevention services. And we, at the Alcohol Drug Abuse Council, see a complete spectrum of care. We don't just treat those who've gotten to the point where they need to go into some type of treatment or get help, but we also start working with those as John has pre-patriotry. Know that's in John, but for all of you who are parents, grandparents, you'll understand this. If we could tell kids something one time and that fixed the problem, boy, we'd have cleaner houses and everything get off under the sun. And it's the same thing with drugs. We start little and we start teaching them that they don't have to fall into even family situations and rethink and break that cycle. Here in your county, the services that we offer, and I know you have it in your package, but we have a variety of services that start with education in the classroom. We have curriculum that goes into the schools and teaches kids, not only, we don't have to teach the kids about drugs. They know about those, the world knows about those. What we try to teach these children are self-esteem, good communication skills. What do you do when the drugs are put in front of you? Many times, good kids are faced with decisions they didn't even put themselves into. They're in a trusted environment with people and the drugs appear. And so what we've got to do is we've got to arm them with what do you do to get out of that situation and that scenario? So we love our kids. Kids are fun, they're, it's a feel-good thing, they love to see us, we love to see them. We bring Leo to the road free line. I know you see him when he comes to town, he's clustered on the side of our van. You have pictures of him in your pocket. He's a rock star and more famous than anybody in this room. He, it's amazing what kids will do just to be able to be with Leo in the line, and that just reinforces that message. We also have programs that handle up all the way to the high school. Again, reinforcing what's been taught and teaching them, what do you need to do to the next level? Not just in high school, not in college, and how do you prevent yourself from falling into the trap? So that we can keep you out of, like I like to say at our office, the other side of the building. What we'd like to do is keep them from having to get a referral or having to go into treatment. But should that day come, we have services are available for them. Right now, I spoke with our clinical director this morning to make sure nothing can change. We all know where we are in the midst of COVID. We still do have telehealth services, and we're still screening and placing people that way of telehealth right now for those clinical services. So we would love consideration to continue those services in your county. The money that you all allot and help us with is something that is required. When we get grants from the state, they require that we get local investment back to show that these programs are worthwhile. So that helps with that. It also helps with any additional cost that we have that maybe grants don't cover, but we want to do with kids. And so we would ask consideration that you guys would continue to fund this so we can continue to be here.
What actually y'all want to take? We only give them 1,500 here? Yeah, I think we do that every year. The test goal, the agenda item to approve that each time. So what is the basic process? Say if we had a child in our neighborhood, community, or whatever, that we wanted to get, help or see some kind of counseling or whatever? What's the normal process to go through?
Well, just an average. So if some of our team was at, say, the high school, and there was a student who was having trouble, and maybe he was referred, or they were working with the counselor or somebody to get them into help. We would then coordinate with our clinical team and see about a screening. The screening always comes first. So we would get them connected with clinical team, get a screening. Sometimes we work directly with the families and we can even bypass that. Because if they have insurance or they have means to pay, then we can just help them along the way in that process. Many times, if people don't have the means to pay, then we go through our OSAR screening service, and that will tap into state funds and what they need to do to get them to a treatment facility. Those are our staff, they're the ones who know. Those are outreach screening assessment referral group. They know where the treatment facility beds are. They know if you're adolescent, whether you need detox, whether you don't. So it becomes a matching game to find to meet their needs. But it's important getting the ball rolling for that, it's a matter of a phone call.
Thank you. I make the motion, we donate the $1,500 to something that's a good cause. And we know that mental health, health nowadays is at the top of the list as far as necessity. And that's investing back in our unit, what we need to do with the best back in our unit. Second. Motion, good mayman, Mr. Wyatt and secondly, Mr. Benson, that we approve the donation of $1,500 to Alcohol and Drug Abuse Council of Deep East Texas. Any more discussion? Mr., we do have a lot enough for that. So any discussion? No, all in favor? Four oh.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Number two and number three, be no action took on those items. We move down to number four, discuss and appropriate authorized and advertised to request proposal application development, project management, and grant administration service with CDBG BIT Local Hazard Mitigation Plan Program.
That's cool. This is GLO funds has come up, and it is for updating our hazard mitigation plan. You know, we have a couple of grants out there now for, to update our plan. And every time we check on them, they're on hold. Even one of them, they contacted us to reduce, to increase the match. Agreed to that, it's still on hold. Our plan expires June of '22, '22, which is next year. These funds, I looked into, and I really think we ought to go for it. It opened up the last week of July. And it's a first come, first served, so if we can get an application in there in the next four to five weeks, hopefully. And as they're coming in, if they're approved, they're, you know, if they're approving their funding. So if we could at least get the funding for it, for the match on another one, if it, I mean, if it comes up. So it's either or, so we're thinking we need to go ahead and apply for the actual plan update, because we've got to get this done. And we're looking at about 80,000 bucks to get a plan done, so.
What does this plan consist of?
That is our hazard mitigation plan, and I'm going to let Owen expand on that a little bit. We have to have it, I know we have to.
Yes, this is not a plan, it was done in 2017. An MPDX did our last plan, it's a requirement. Received a FEMA funding, we have to have an approved hazard mitigation plan. And so they expire every five years. And I think it's June or July, it's one of our, our current plan expired. And if we do not have a current plan, all of our FEMA funding goes on hold. And so we really need this people, our FEMA funding, moving through all of our different, whether it's road projects, our show theater, whatever. We've been working on this process almost a year. We called the due, it was, it was expiring. I found some funding for writing it.
We don't know what holdup is on the other grants. We just keep contacting them, and they're like, well, they're in review, they're in review, and, you know, we need to know something. So anyway, this came up, and we thought maybe this will be another opportunity to get funded for it. So it doesn't have to come out of our budget.
Well, Owen, how long would this take to review and rewrite this plan?
It's very minimal, six months. And that's really trying to speed the process along. There's required community meetings that had to be held, that's a requirement from FEMA into plan. And then the process wants whoever we get to write the plan, they submit it to TDM. TDM reviews it, and most time they kick it back with some changes. Once TDM approves it, then it's submitted to FEMA for their approval. That process takes a couple of months once you actually get the plan ready to get that taken care of. But there's some steps in it, the public comment period, some community meetings that have to be held and have to be recorded in part of the plan.
That motion good? Second. Motion, good mayman, Mr. Benson, and secondly, Mr. Palmby, that we approve the authorization to advertise a request for proposal for application development project payment, grant administration on CDBG BIT Local Hazard Mitigation Plan Program. Any discussion? All in favor? Four. Number five, is discussing appropriate approved to go out for bid for 10,679 tons of rock, seven roads. That's a project, Harvey Project 43713, GW4805, and 4332DR text. And Mr. Jean is not here today, and I think he's requested Mr. Palmby to present that.
We've already went out for bids for this in the last court meeting, I believe, if I'm not bad mistaken. And the bids have already been received, and we did accept Vulcan, if I'm not bad mistaken, on that, for the lot.
Thought this was a difficult project.
Vulcan, I believe Vulcan got the bid on that, out of Omaha. I remember voting for the limestone, for the limestone.
The same project?
Yeah.
Okay, this is the same project, that's the same project. We don't need to do it.
Well, no, he told me that we needed to okay it, go ahead and okay it, and call it what he told me. But this is all coming out of his, it's coming out of the bid, out of his budget. What he told me.
It says here, approve to go out for bid, that's why I was curious.
I know, but Vulcan got the bid, there was, there were three bids sent out. Vulcan got it.
Rhonda, are you on?
Yeah, I see her.
I'm here.
Okay, okay, so the one we did for Vulcan, Vulcan for Mr. Jean, what project was that, do you remember? Was that these 11 raids?
I don't believe so. I mean, everything's back at the office, but I think it's on a different project.
I thought, so my suggestion would be let's approve to do this, that we will double check, because I think it's a separate project that Vulcan came back on the bid for.
Okay.
So let's approve it. And if this is a separate project, we're going to do it. If not, I will let the court know at next court that we just rescind that.
Regardless, it's coming out of his budget, he's got money.
Well, this is the Harvey project here, he's going to actually, it'll be out of his budget, then he'll get reimbursed.
Correct.
Yes.
So I guess I make that motion.
Second. Second, yes. Motion, good mayman, Mr. Palmby and secondly, Mr. Wyatt, that we approve to go out for bid on 10,679 tons of rock for 11 roads. Any discussion? All in favor? Four. Number six, is discussing appropriate approved go out for bid for two inches of asphalt for approximately 1.29 miles of county road on 3113.
Okay, that one there also is a 9010, from what I understand, he told me yesterday. 90% ran, 10% out of his budget.
I think that's another Harvey project.
Correct, and I'll go ahead and make that motion. Do that.
I second. Good mayman, Mr. Palmby and secondly, Mr. Benson, that we approve to go out for bid on 10,679 tons of asphalt for approximately 1.29 miles of road, county road 3113. Any discussion? All in favor? Four. Number seven, discuss and appropriate approved agreement between Lake Area Home Inspection, Newton County, to conduct a damage assessment on GLO contract number 2015 flood 18-384-000-B093. And 2015 flood 18-385-000-B094.
And this is, and Rhonda's on here too, she needs to come in, but this is on the 2015 flood, you know, we reopened the applications. And we've got three or four houses we're going to possibly do under it. And since we're doing this from the very beginning, we have to do damage assessment. And Rhonda or I, either one, are certified to do a damage assessment. But Lake City Home Inspection, who does our final inspections, our track inspections, is qualified to do this. And GLO said that all we have to do is change, is just do an addition to his work, that he can do the damage assessments for us. And he is willing to do it for the same price at the $300.
That was my question.
Yeah.
How much more is it going to cost?
Right, Rhonda, he's still going to do $300, correct?
Still three, still $300 for, for the damage assessment.
And that'll get us rolling, I think, we've got one that's ready to be inspected right now.
Good, we've got a total of four.
We're going to end it, well.
Depending on the size of the house.
Yes, we got three or four, it just depends on the size of the house. So, and we'll go into some detail on that in our workshop this afternoon.
How many applications did you get?
Twenty.
Oh, really?
Eighteen, I mean, eighteen or eighteen.
No, between 18 and 20.
Eight hundred and fifty, exactly. We've got a list for you all this afternoon.
Are we a motion?
I make that motion.
I second. Motion, good mayman, Mr. Palmby and secondly, Mr. Benson, that we approve the agreement between Lake Area Home Inspection in Newton County for assessment damage on the GLO housing. Any discussions? All in favor? Four. I'm ready, discuss and appropriate approve the doctor public hearing on the county clerk record management and registered archive written plan for physical year 20, I got 2021 and 2022, Mr. K.
We just need to open that public hearing. This has been randomly, new randomly for two weeks. My law, I have to run my heart happening to let the public know and be aware of what I'm going to be using those designated funds for. We're currently trying to get everything digitized. And there are some books that are in need of repair. We are, we're trying to run out of rent, so we've stopped making books, but the books that we do have, I'm trying to get digitized. They keep from having to affect the public. We can just print them if they're. These are dedicated funds, so I can do the public hearing, and then y'all have to, so allow me to use those some. We just need to open that up if we have public questions. If you have comments about that. And then it's not a fee that I'm going to be adding, it's a fee that we've been claiming. So it's money that sits here.
You're going to drain it two weeks?
Yes.
When will you have it public hearing or you put it in the paper?
It's already written in the paper, y'all approved me to average. Y'all approved it average. And today we just opened it up, if there was, you know, any question or anything like that. And then if there are none, we just close the public hearing. And then if y'all approve this, this way, then I can go forward with that.
You plan on having that?
Running. This is our public hearing.
Oh, this is.
See, I put it on the agenda the first time to approve the average. And then I ran it in the paper, look at who it's on, you know, I will report. And then today we just opened it up, you know, if there's questions about what I plan on doing with those funds, because they are designated, dedicated funds. But it's money that I already had, we just have to be very specific, and have to be a plan on how we can use those funds.
That is gonna be.
And we're planning on the whole, we're not, it gets out in here, should be in here. Yeah, exactly.
This is our package.
Yeah, that's what she did. Yeah.
I make that motion.
I second. Motion been made, and second would approve, motion been made by Mr. Palmby and second by Mr. White, that we approve the public hearing for the county clerk record management and record archive written plan for twenty twenty-one, twenty-two. Any discussion? All in favor? Number nine, is discussion appropriate approved, the county clerk record management and record archive written plan for fiscal year twenty twenty-one, twenty-two. Any discussion?
We'll close the public hearing. For y'all to accept my lead for the bill.
I make that motion.
A second. Motion been made by Mr. Palmby and second by Mr. White, that we approve and accept the county clerk record management and record archive written plan for fiscal twenty-one, twenty-one and twenty-two. Any more discussion? All in favor? Number ten and number eleven, uh, will be no action took on it, but I would like to put out a statement. Earlier this summer, the commissioner court published notice of the intent to issue CO for the proposed county jail improvement that will be included in the law enforcement center and justice center. Modern publication of notice will be requested, received questions from the community regarding the project, and propose certificates of obligation as well as a petition. In response to the community concern, the county commissioner court has determined that we're going to abandon the issue of issues of certificate of obligation called for bond election. Holding a bond election will allow the county to clearly articulate what is going to be presented to the voters. And it will be given, it will be given, and it will give voters the opportunity to weigh in on the project. The commission court will meet on Thursday, still clocked, to consider calling an election or bond election. So those two out of the fees passed over. We'll go on to number twelve, discuss and appropriate consider taking action regarding bid received from the properties held in trust by the taxing entity.
It was a bid to.
If you don't mind. Thank you.
I'm Carrie with MBBA. I'm here on behalf of Sheena, she has six days. We received a bid on August third, in the amount of nineteen thousand dollars for property ID numbers four, five, seven, four, four, and two, five, five, three, two. Just like to present this to you guys, Phil.
That's the building. That's the building in Louisville.
So, so you want approval or not on?
We would like for approval. Yeah, sorry.
What is approval?
Just approval. Okay.
That's, that's the building that, had been some concern that went through the court here not long ago, that we actually was authorized to go out for bid. There was some slow action, so there, they was going, go through the tax sale, and so we actually went through the tax sale, and we've been offered nineteen thousand dollars. So she's wanting us to acknowledge and award that, or whichever.
So the Louisville school is gonna get theirs out of the pool?
If, if we were to sell for nineteen thousand, the Louisville school get their share, also the ESD will get there. Just that old grocery store? I thought we put a cap on it, thirty-five now. Yes, we did, but there, there was never a bid let out. There was never was a request for bid. I mean, we requested through the court, but there was never was put in the paper or anything. So the tax sale came up and they override this. So, yeah, overrode it. But we don't have to accept the nineteen thousand, but we are the trustee. Sixteen thousand, what we wanted, right? One, we're thirty-five, so.
Well, and you're gonna take Louisville school, and the ESD is gonna take a pretty good chunk of it.
That's the question. If it went out for bid, I could, there was no set term.
We have to accept it. The, as trustee asked to go through, commission court has been accepting. We don't think.
Can we do it again?
I put it back. Yeah, I mean.
Was it a fellow from Louisville, or did we know who bought it?
It was Dab, Dabland.
Outsider?
Been investor.
What you going that with, ten pound, huh? I say decline.
Make that a motion.
I mean, we have a conversation, right? I got three more, I got two more down, I got four.
It's a little low. We got to throw that by the head. You don't like the motion? You don't like the motion? Accepted. The plan, yeah. Yeah, that's quite a bit lower than what we were expecting. How much property is with that?
Well, it's just point eight five six.
Okay, that's a lot.
Did the house behind it sell, Phil?
I don't know. I'm just filling in.
Did the house behind it sell?
I know it's been through a realtor, but I don't know whether, it wasn't a tax sale.
I don't know. I don't know the answer to that.
Who you gonna have another sale?
Question you that I can, I can find out. I think December is when it's set, so.
Here's no motion, there's no action took on number twelve. Okay, as usual, on number thirteen, fourteen, and fifteen, which is concerning of the COVID-nineteen declaration, American law declaration, winter storm declaration, we'll all lump those three together, which is fourteen, fourteen, and fifteen, and extend those to September thirteenth, twenty twenty-one. Make that motion. Second. Motion made by Mr. Benson, second by Mr. White, that we will extend the COVID-nineteen declaration, American law declaration, and winter storm declaration to September thirteenth, twenty twenty-one. Any discussion? All in favor? Number sixteen is pay the bill, Ms. Chair.
General fund, hundred and thirty-five thousand, nine hundred and sixty-six fifty-three. Instructed county state fund, two thousand one hundred and nine dollars and eighty cents. Roden Bridge General, thirty-four thousand, two hundred and sixty-three dollars and ninety cents. Roden Bridge Precinct, twenty-four thousand, six hundred and fifty-eight dollars and twenty-four cents. Roden Bridge Precinct two, thirty-two thousand, one hundred and two dollars and fourteen cents. Roden Bridge Precinct three, thirty-one thousand, nine hundred and ninety dollars and thirty cents. Roden Bridge Precinct four, sixty-six thousand, six hundred and fifty-nine, sixty-six thousand, six hundred dollars and fifty-nine cents. Port House Security, four hundred and seventeen dollars and ninety-six cents. BAW grant, five thousand, two hundred and thirty-six dollars and twenty-eight cents. Precinct one, twenty-nine thousand, five hundred and seventy-one dollars and forty-three cents.
Ten thousand, four oh two thirty-nine.
Marge, can I?
I have no idea.
Marge, is that you? Ms. Marge, can you turn off your mute? Turn on your mute.
Commissioner's special precinct two, thirty-nine thousand, sixteen dollars and thirty cents. Commissioner's special precinct three, thirty-nine thousand, seven hundred and fifty-six dollars and ninety-four cents. Commissioner's special precinct four, thirty-three thousand, eight hundred and sixty dollars and forty-four cents. Record preservation, two thousand, eight hundred and forty-three dollars and fifty-four cents. Sheriff's bunch of bands, six hundred and ninety-six dollars and eighty cents. Solid waste disposal, twenty-six thousand, three hundred and twenty-four dollars and forty-six cents. Voter registration, four thousand, eight hundred and seventy-three dollars and thirty-eight cents. Newton County Library, twelve thousand, four dollars and forty-six cents. Historical operating, four thousand, two hundred and fifty-five dollars. Records management, twelve dollars and nine cents. Hazard mitigation grant, thirty-six thousand, two hundred and forty dollars. FEMA grants, thirteen thousand, eight hundred and forty-eight dollars and seventy-one cents. Grant, five hundred, thirty-three thousand, eight hundred and seventy-seven dollars and thirty-four cents. State fee account, thirty-nine thousand, nine hundred and eight dollars and sixty-nine cents. And technology fund, two hundred and nine dollars and twelve cents. For a total of all funds, one million, six hundred and fifty thousand, six hundred and eighty-five dollars and forty-three cents.
If we can end up, here a motion to approve. Make the motion that we paid a bill.
Second.
Motion been made by Mr. White and second by Mr. Palmby, we paid the bill. Any discussion? All in favor? There a motion to adjourn? Motion been made by Mr. Palmby and second by Mr. White, adjourn. Ten forty-six.